Thank you. That's what I was just gonna ask about. I appreciate that. Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Finance Standing Committee for April 26, 2022. And we establish a quorum with all members of the committee present. Chairman's report. I, this is kind of an aside to the information that we're talking to today, but I did want to mention it in that. Now, this is strange. So can anyone see me?
Yes, yes, we can see and hear you.
Well, interesting because I Can you see us? I, yeah, no, I, well, no, I shouldn't say that. There is a, I have a screen in the screen and I can't seem to be able to enlarge that. But I do have a and for some reason, it's prompting me to end the webinar. Haley, are you participating?
Is Laia still on? Because she may have left and that, that would be a problem.
Well, I've got it back up again now, so onward and upward. I just wanted to mention in the chairman's report as we get into the information, particularly as regards the audit report. There's a lot of misinformation that's being distributed within the social media community, as well as, I guess, at the farmer's market regarding somehow that the WRF has $8 million in it that should be used for wastewater. And that, that's an issue because that is not the case. That is incorrect. And actually, we can point to information in the audit report today that would show that. The only thing that I can think of is that somehow the, the cash and investments value that is shown at eight, just over $8 million in the from the finance managers' report is somehow being inferred in that way. I don't know, or that somehow folks may feel that the $8.9 million, which was the original loan principal amount, somehow exists still as cash within WRF, which doesn't make any sense either, but not, not knowing how those things evolve or what it's built around, I'm afraid that that the only thing we can do is try to provide the correct information, so we'll look at some ways to do that. So I just wanted to relay that as far as the chairman's report is concerned. We can move on to the subcommittee reports. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't believe that we have any subcommittee reports today. None seen. All right, then, to committee member communications. Are there any members of the committee who have anything that they'd like to announce a report on briefly? Marvin?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I would just like to make a comment. I'd like to express appreciation to President Howell and to some of our colleagues on the RNI Committee for making the effort to get the real information out to the public. It's so important, this rate increase is so desperately needed. And there's so much, as you said, misinformation out there that it's really, I think, very critical that, that we all try to convey the, the consequences if we don't get this rate increase. So again, thanks to President Howell and particularly to Michael Thomas on the RNI Committee, others that have also participated. My comment.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. All right, any, any other comments or communications anyone would like to provide? All right, seeing none, then we will move to public comment. And right now, I see two attendees, however, they are both directors, so they would not be able to interact with us directly because of brownneck constraints. So I'm not expecting that either of them have something to say for right now. That being said, I don't see any other attendees who may have questions, so I will take it as no public comment at this time. So what we will do then is move to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is consideration to approve the March 22, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments, corrections, additions, deletions associated with those minutes? Okay, seeing Mr. Seckler.
I move that the minutes be adopted as written.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Marer. And so for roll call, Mr. Seckler.
Aye.
And Ms. Marer.
Aye.
And Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
And Ms. Christman.
Aye.
And Ms. McDowell.
Aye.
All right, thank you all. So the minutes accepted as stated on a vote of five zero. Thank you. We'll move on to regular business. We've got some dense things to take a look at this morning. What we will do then is move to the first item, which is Agenda Item 3A for discussion and review of fiscal year 2021 Audit and Financial Statements. And Mr. Whitegold, as the are, do you want to introduce the agenda item on this?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Ms. Duffield.
So, as president or president's title, sorry, Chair Stidell. And stated, Agenda Item 3A is to discuss and review the fiscal year 2021 Audit and Financial Statements. Again, this year, we had Moss Levy Hartsheim is our external auditors, and we have Mr. Alexander Hom, who is the senior auditor. And he was the auditor that was also on site with his team during the process. And so we have him, it looks like his speaker is released and he is ready to provide the audit report. Okay, Alex, you can go ahead.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Hom. Thank you for being here today.
Well, thank you for having me. Good morning, everyone. We gave Cambria Community Services District the unmodified clean opinion. In terms of how the financial statements looked, it's essentially status quo from last year. There's no major changes in terms of how it looks. Throughout the audit, there, there are tiny things in terms of finding wise, but like, nothing to significantly report. It's just like tiny things here and there. In terms of adjustments we had to make, mainly it had to do with the conversion between Moms and Tyler. There were just little things to clean up in terms of journal entries, but like, overall, nothing, nothing significant to report on that. In terms of how in terms of the financial, the finances look, it, you know, ki- kind of looks, it looks better than, than prior year in terms of you know, wa- wastewater actually has, you know, actually cash balance this year. Other than that, it's pretty much status quo. So and as always, Pam, Pam did a fantastic job. Conversions are not easy. I've seen, I've seen a handful of them throughout my years and, and she, she did this one pretty good. So kudos to Pam on that. And then, other than that, I'll open it up for questions for the audit report.
All right, yes, Ms. McDowell.
I have a question, page 21. Oh, no, well, 21 on the top, nine on the bottom, personnel costs represents 54%. Is that normal? Or is that high or? And then I had another question regarding loans, if they can qualify for any loans. I got that in here someplace, but 54% of the expenditure is related to personnel.
It's in ter- in terms of it's a district by district case, but for the most, for the most part, mostly you'll see all the most places, though, their personnel cost is usually above half.
Above it?
Yeah, it's usually above half. Like, you, you see it with all these other agencies and everything are above half. If you look at a school district, they're required to ha- they're most, like, a, a school district is not the same as this, but like, for that type of place, i- it, they require 55%. Or depending on, on the, the district, 60, up to 60% of times, too. This is, this is pretty typical.
Thank you, Mr. Hom. Are there any other questions, Mr. Seckler?
Yeah, I'd like to build on what your chairman's report was starting out with. I, I note that the financial statements term the fund balances as assigned. And one of the things that now that our audits are caught up that I hope we can really start getting much more focus on is the allocation of the fund balances. So if I, if I were looking at the water fund, for instance, which has four plus million dollars balance, fund balance, it seems to me that there is probably restricted fund balance that is for brine waste hauling. There's assigned fund balance that would be for capital improvements. And then there would be unassigned fund balance. And, you know, I, I think we could go fund by fund and, and probably see that the that the way that the fund balances are actually characterized in these statements doesn't give us enough granularity in terms of the the allocation of the fund balances. So that's, that's a comment, and I guess I would turn it around as a question. Is this something that we should be looking forward to?
And is that question for Ms. Duffield or?
Well, it's, it's for, it's probably starts with Pam, but I, I think it's a, it's an important audit issue as well.
Ms. Duffield, do you do you wish to respond in that?
Well, it's something that we can look into, but historically, we haven't really, I guess, maybe use the financial system to that capacity. You know, I don't think we have any designated reserves. You know, there's better listed within the financials. So it'll just have to be something that we can review and look at, and it's probably a good exercise to go over once the new finance manager is hired.
So in, in terms of, especially the example with the water fund, in terms of how the rules of the presentation of the financial statements, and it's only it'll show the, in terms of the, the balance, it will show only unrestricted, restricted, and they don't, they don't break it down in assigned and anything, because that's the that's the rules in terms of how, like, a water enterprise type of fund is shown, presented. When you see the governmental side of things, that's when they break it down in terms of assigned, unassigned, committed, restricted, and non-spendable. So in terms of the water fund, like, if you assign something, it's not going to show up in the terms of the presentation of the financial statements. That's more of a budget. That's more in terms of the budgetary side of things. But for the governmental side, yeah, you, you can show more of the sign. You could break it down, show, show more in terms of how you want to broke it down and everything like that.
Yeah, so, so in this, in this year ending June 22, we will have funds that have been committed to the restroom and funds that have been committed to the skate park. And so those, those should be segregated in some way so that we're not looking at, looking to those as being available for other things that we haven't identified yet. And that, so it's, it's just, you know, we've made so much progress in being able to you know, really understand what our financial situation is, that I think it's, it's time now to to start applying some rigor to, to the you know, how the fund balances are allocated.
So, so a little, a little thing in terms of the so for com- committed funds, in order for it to be shown as committed funds, there has to be a board resolution pretty much saying you're committing these funds. Assigned, assigned.
There have been, there, yeah, excuse me, there, there have been, and I'm talking about this year, not, not the the audited year, but this year, there have been board resolutions committing those funds.
Okay, so, so next year it'll show as committed then. So, yeah, so.
That's what I would, that's what I would expect, yeah.
Yeah, and then.
Well, it's, I think they're getting a little bit of confusion. So what the board has done, Alex, is the board has programmed certain reserves for use through the budget process for the restroom project and for and for the skate park. So those are already displayed because those are in the current year budget. I think what Ted has been asking about is the balance remaining allocating the balance remaining for what kind of purpose it is. Because if we've already gone to the board and programmed those reserves to be used for the project, we don't want to earmark those again in our reserves.
And so then, so then I'm, I'm talking more in terms of the presentation of, of the financial statements. So like, in terms of if you're doing it through the budget process, that's not exactly doing a board resolution for saying, like, we commit X month, like, it has to be a board resolution saying, we commit X amount of funds for this. That, that's, that's what, in terms of the presentation purposes, that's a commitment. If you're doing it through the budget process and everything, that's pretty much just a decision made to assign the funds, essentially. That's why it's an assignment. That's why most of the times it's just an assignment.
Now, I, I would think that in the 21 year, most of the fund balance is unassigned. And, and so it's, it's a little inconsistent with the way the, the report presents it.
Okay, uh, what I want to take the opportunity to do as we are into some of the detail here of the audit report. Of course, you know, this report is available online to anybody in the community who wants to be able to take a look at the information, but
It will not be available online until, while it's available here as a draft, but we won't post it on the website where our normal audit reports are until after the board has received their report.
The, okay, all right, yeah, it's, it's part of the, the posted agenda package. I guess I'll qualify it in that way.
Correct. It won't be posted to the website until after it's received, received and filed by the board, which would be the first meeting in May, which is May 12.
Okay. All right, um. So the, there is a conversation in there, by the way, about the, the $8.6 million cash that Ms. Duffield refers to her on it in her finance managers' report on a monthly basis at our board meetings. And the information in the agenda package shows the way it's actually exists within the individual funds that we have. And also gives an explanation of the change from one fiscal year to the next through the 2021, 2020, 2021 time period that has brought us to that $8.6 million. So if people want to take a look at that and understand that a little bit, that information is available in the document.
Yeah, can I, can I make a further comment about that? That is if people are misinformed about the cash position, two things are important. Number one, that each, each fund has its own share of the total cash of the $8.6 million. And the second thing is that funds that are in the water fund which include WRF, WRF Capital and the you know, the rest of the water operation are not available in any way, shape or form for the wastewater fund. And, and so, you know, there, there, it sounds like are at least two misconceptions about the cash floating around in the misinformation universe.
Yeah, and unfortunately, it's being distributed at the farmer's market, so we need to find a way of providing some education for some folks so they understand how the district works. Thank you.
Oh, I wouldn't allow it to consume you, Cindy.
Sorry?
I wouldn't allow it to consume you. You know, people are entitled to their opinion. People are entitled, if, you know, let's.
Absolutely.
Opinion is different than fact.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and facts are important for this. Because if, if people don't understand the reality is, is if we if we don't have approval of the rates, we're not in a position to be able to obtain a loan to do the work that needs to be done within our facilities. And if, if the facilities fail, we don't have a lot of recourse.
We're not going there. This isn't about social media. This is about sticking to this item on the agenda. So I prefer.
Thank you, Ms. McDowell.
You just, thank you.
So are there any other questions that anyone has or any other clarifications about the data that anyone may need or would offer? All right. Well, Mr. Hom, is there anything else you want to share with us or anything else in letting go of this part of your work content for a while?
I, I got no further comment. All right, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, sir. Really appreciate you coming to, to see us today and to bring the information. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bye, Pam.
Bye, Alex. Thank you.
All right, well, we don't have a formal action to take on this as far as the actual agenda item. The discussion and the review that we've performed would be, if we choose as a, as a, as a committee to pass on to the board that we have reviewed the information with Mr. Hom and that we have no additional actions or recommendations related to the audit report. If that's fairly stated, unless someone feels that it's something different than that. And we don't need to have a formal vote, vote on that, as there is no consideration in this.
You can't have a formal vote on it.
I don't think it was set up for a vote. It was.
No, no, that's why I said we cannot have a vote on it because it is not for consideration.
Correct. It was just discussion and review.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Anything additionally then relates to the audit report?
I have just a question.
Mr. Cohen, yes.
On the, on the recommendation letter from staff, the bottom paragraph says the district had a total of 4,675, 532 in cash distributed as below. Well, the distribution below shows 8,658, so.
Right, there was an amended, there was an amended agenda package that was put out, and the first number that you mentioned was corrected to the 8,658 in concert with the breakdown.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem. Easily resolved. All right then, so Ms. Duffield, if you would, as part of your agenda item for the, the, the board meeting, if you would pass our review and know to shall comment along, please.
I will. I'll include that in the staff report.
Thank you. All right, then, we would move on to regular business. 3B, and Mr. Whitegold, if you want to introduce this, fine, or do you want to hand Ms. Duffield do so?
I'll go ahead and introduce it.
All right.
Okay, so item 3B of our agenda today is to review the third quarter budget report and staff recommendations. So the third quarter timeframe is from July 1 of 2021 through March 31 of 2022. And in that time period, the Board of Directors has approved a budget adjustment during that time for funding of the next phase of the skate park. It was roughly $59,000 that was approved, and that was approved in March. In addition to that, a request is being made in this quarterly report to amend the budget in the water fund. And this is related to the emergency water line break that occurred at the end of December. The full cost of that emergency repair are now known. And so the budget adjustment recommendation from the water fund is $366,000. That includes the actual contractor work, some rental of tanks that had to occur at the time of the break, and also the environmental component that was required during the repair, the contract repair of the project. And other than that, we don't have any other budget adjustments to submit at this time. Moving on to the report, it's Moving on to the report itself. I'll just start. So let's see, on page sixty five, which is on the top left corner of the report. And this is the fund summary for the general fund. This is all the revenues and expenses consolidated. For the general fund departments, which is. The fire department, the facilities and resources department, pros and administration. So that's the consolidation there you'll see. So just keep in mind when you're looking at the far right column. That the percentages are not percentages spent, they're percentages remaining. You know, that's kind of been a something we've had to get adjusted to since the Tyler implementation. That column's a little bit different than what we've been. Looking at in past years. So you know, this time of year, you know, we basically exhausted seventy five percent of the year. So when most of what you should see over there should be close to that twenty five percent. Remaining threshold, so. So we seem to be faring okay in the general fund. Specifically for the fire department. If we move on, then their budget starts on page sixty eight. I guess there's, yeah, page sixty eight starts the fire department. So we're continuing to watch. The overage that we have in overtime due to some injuries that the fire department has been challenged with and staffing. You know, backfilling for those injured staff, so. You know, we've all been working together, the fire chief, the general manager and I to manage that. And at this point, what the resolution is, is the fire chief has decided to postpone. Going forward with the purchase of the vehicle for this fiscal year. And there was a fire truck purchase and we're going to continue that into next fiscal year. So that we can work out the overtime overage. Some capital improvement projects are brewing at the fire department. You'll see on. Let's see, where does capital start? It starts towards the latter half of page seventy. So there's a couple of things that are in process right now. The fueling station computer replacement is in process, so hopefully we will see that. Full expenditure happen in the fourth quarter. The radio system upgrade is in process and so is the security entrance gates. The dollar amount that you see to date of one thousand was a deposit. That we paid to get the gate installation started. So again, you know, in the next reporting, you'll be able to see the full cost of that. And then they're also working on getting the quotes completed for the storage shed and that storage shed was damaged during the storm, so. You'll be, you know, seeing all those kind of things happen for fire. Moving forward to facilities and resources.
Ms. Duffield, I apologize for interrupting you, but several of these. Capital improvement items, actually, we did receive funds. For some of that activity, if I'm not mistaken.
So we have a grant for the radio upgrade and that was put into the budget, so you'll see that on the revenue side. And then we have applied for a grant for the Zoll X Series EKG machine, but at this point, we do not have. Award of that grant. I believe it's still. It's still being reviewed and in process. We haven't received any concrete. Information on that item.
Right. Thank you. I apologize for the interruption.
No, that's okay. So the rest of the items in capital would be funded. From general fund, from from the taxes or from reserves. Okay, moving on to facilities and resources. So again, facilities and resources, you know, they're they're doing well. You'll see some ups and downs within their expenditures. But you know, that that happens every year. You know, we have that. We recently had. An encampment cleanup, so you'll see that reflected again in the fourth quarter as well there. And let's see, where is that at? That is on. Towards the top of page seventy six. There's been minimal activity this year in those cleanups, so. You know, you'll see that cleanup reflect in the budget in the fourth quarter. Facilities is pretty much finished their. Renovation of the the building that was damaged during the storm in January of twenty twenty one. And we have submitted all of those costs. For repairing the building, you know, replacing desks, replacing appliances like a washer and dryer that were damaged. And you know, all of that equipment and everything that was damaged. We've submitted all those costs to Cal OES. And they are currently evaluating what will be covered. And what will not be covered, so we expect that outcome to be forthcoming in the next couple of months, is. My guess on how long it would take to get all that information from them, so so we are actively working with them. To determine what is a covered eligible expenditure and what they will not be covering. They've already told us they won't cover anything to do with the truck that was damaged. You know, the truck was sold anyways. It was ready to be sent to auction, so there's not much we can do on the recovery of the vehicle itself. But as far as the building, facilities and resources had a lot of fencing that was damaged. They had the entrance gate that was damaged. They had a shed that was basically just, you know, broken down through the storm. So all of those kinds of things, they're still evaluating on what they're going to partake in as far as, you know, replacement costs or not.
Right, Ms. McDowell, you appeared to have a question.
Do we need to have a separate policy for like earthquake insurance? I mean, when there's an act of God. Act of God, is there is there a rider or something, Pam, that? Because a lot of these things are depreciated through the years. Washer and dryer, those things get depreciated. That's nickel and dime. But is there a special policy on that could help for floods and different things or no?
So the way our insurance works is that is if that is a catastrophic event. It has a categoric exemption. And we have a five hundred dollar deductible. Normally, our insurance deductible is one thousand. But when that major event happens, our deductible goes up to five hundred thousand dollars, so. So that means we would be responsible for the first five hundred thousand. The kind of the thought process we've been told by our insurance company is that when it becomes an event like that, there would be. Resources from the state or federal government to assist us in recovery. So that's kind of what we're challenged with right now. We have to provide to Cal OES why the insurance isn't. Partaking in any of these costs and helping us, you know, with with the repairs. So we've had to submit all of that information to them and we're hoping that they will help us instead. Thank you.
So Ms. Duffield, just to so that there isn't any confusion. Thing, things like washing machines and refrigerators don't actually get depreciated in our. Our world, they're they're more an expense. They're not a large enough dollar volume to carry. Carry on the books.
Right, it has to be a piece of equipment has to be five thousand or greater to be. Put through the depreciation process.
Thank you.
But do we depreciate in the, do we depreciate assets in the general fund anyway?
We don't.
Yeah, so. Right, it's it's all.
Loose point.
Yeah, but then that's more confusing. Why are we doing it in one fund and not the other, so? It just gets more confusing to everybody.
Yeah, details, details.
We still track them, you know, we still track them on, you know, the fixed asset system will still track them, but they just don't get specific depreciation booked every year.
Okay.
Okay, so then moving on to. To pros. You know, the the budget adjustment is in there. You know, for both the skate park, which is on page eighty one. You'll see the commitment that the board added, that budget adjustment, it's towards the. Last third of the page, you'll see that outlined. And then the other budget adjustments that have happened were related to the carry forwards. Or the consultant agreements for the skate park and the restroom. And then the restroom programming of the three hundred and fifty one thousand, so. You know, all of that you can expect to see carried forward into the new fiscal year because those projects will continue to be ongoing for for a couple of more fiscal years. Administration, so. The write-up to the board will include some discussion and recommendation that staff is going to be requesting of the board. And how to deal with the litigation costs and the trial prep fees and all the costs related to. The lawsuit that the district has been involved in since, you know, the biggest part of the invoices were like November to December. So there's, I don't know, we're still getting invoices trickling in. My last count was around four hundred thousand dollars. In in litigation costs. So generally, what happens is anything that in the administrative fund. At the end, you know, we we create our administrative overhead allocation table at the beginning of the year when we do the budget. And then each quarter, you know, we just process, you know, post a quarter of that expense up until the fourth quarter. And then in the fourth quarter, when all of the costs are recognized in administration and we have a final total, we true up that amount. And generally, legal costs get allocated per the schedule to all the departments and the funds. You know, accordingly. Well, because of this large legal expense, I I just think I would like to have some discussion and direction with the board. On how they may want to change. How this is addressed. Do they want to take it all from reserves? Do they want to go ahead and allocate it to all the departments as per the schedule? You know, do they want to do a blend? You know, allocate part of it, take part of it from reserves, so. So that's not something I'm asking for any of you. To to weigh in on unless you feel strongly one way or another on how it should be handled, but. I just wanted to bring to your attention that we will be. Putting that in the staff report to the board and asking the board to provide. Some direction to us and staff on how they wish to have those costs handled.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Karen Richmond, Karen dropped off and I noticed she's attendees, so I don't know who can make that happen.
Ms. Duffield? I apologize, but.
Who has? Chair Stidell, do you have the?
I, okay, so if I select on Karen and it's allowed to talk or it's more.
Yeah, they should be little dots.
All right, yes.
I think you have the administrator rights for me.
So. There's promote to panelist, which I've clicked on.
Yeah, she has to accept it. Karen has to accept it.
All right, Karen. If you can hear me.
She'll get a little flash on her screen to accept as a coming in as a panelist.
Thank you for pointing that out. Okay.
I didn't notice that she dropped off.
I hadn't either. She just disappeared from there, so maybe.
Maybe she's having computer problems.
Maybe.
Because the fact that she dropped off. So I can keep an eye on it and let you know if I see her again.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Let's see.
All right, Ms. Duffield.
So we're okay to continue?
Please.
Okay. Okay, so that is the press of the general fund. Do you have any questions before I move on to? The enterprise spends?
And more, any any additional questions related to the general fund? So. See, I don't know if that is.
That might be her.
I see a phone.
I see a phone number.
Can you promote her and then demote her?
Right. So nine two seven five two oh two, is that you? Karen?
Yes, I'm on the phone. Something is has gone haywire with wifi in my house. I'm really sorry.
Oh, please don't apologize. I'm glad you you found the option to join us, so thank you. So we're just finishing off with the general fund and we're going to be moving on. Okay, Ms. Duffield?
Did Karen have any questions on the general fund?
Yes, what did you say? I'm sorry.
Well, I I I'm not quite sure when you dropped off.
Oh, I've I dropped off when we were still, oh my goodness. We were still, well, we had started the general fund, so maybe I can get a recap later on outside offline.
If you'd like, certainly.
It's all recorded.
And it's all recorded as well, so you could always. Watch the footage and email me if you have a question or something.
Oh, of course. Thanks, thanks.
Okay. Okay, so now we're moving on to page ninety one. Which starts the enterprise funds and the enterprise funds are water, wastewater, WRF operations and WRF capitals that are covered in there. So page ninety one consolidates all of the enterprise funds together. And then, as requested at a previous finance committee meeting, then. Two pages forward, we get just the water fund apartments. And funds which are funded for the water, WRF operations and capital. And then two pages later, we get just wastewater on its own, so we have them all consolidated and then we have them separated by type. So the water fund. And that begins, actually, the detailed pages begin on page ninety eight is the water fund. So we have some budget adjustments that have just been happening at the last board meeting. Related to some studies that needed to continue, so that activity will be in the fourth quarter. That is not reflected in what you're seeing through the end of March. In case you're looking for those items, they're not in here yet. And the big thing that you might notice is. Let's see what page it's on, so I can zero in for you. So it is on page one hundred and it's about a third of the way down the page. It is. Account number eleven dash sixty thirty five, V as in Victor, dash eleven. So you're going to see those expenditures go negative substantially. This is due to the contract that the water department took to the Board of Directors. As a as a component to the county's paving activity that's been happening happening over the last few months. So the vendor that was doing that pay. So the vendor that was doing that paving approached the district and offered, you know, a very, very reasonable price to go through and do all of the water valves and the wastewater manhole raising, which generally we can't do because we have to hire a separate contractor to do that after the paving is done. So this is the first time in many, many, many years that we're actually doing that in conjunction with the paving project. So you might have recalled that we just amended that agreement with Cal Portland at the last board meeting because they have been in the field and they found some more water valves that need to be raised. So in order to offset that, they're going to not spend other items here. So, you know, the, the manager is working on their budget to not do certain things this year so that they can offset the cost of the manhole raising or sorry, the water valve raising. You'll see the same thing in wastewater because they did a significant effort in wastewater as well for the manhole rising. So they're just kind of going to not spend some stuff, you know, some current budget that they were going to do. They're going to offset the, the contract for Cal Portland. There has been a little bit of capital activity in the water fund. You'll see, you'll see that activity and that's on page one hundred and two. And the activity that you're seeing is related to this new item that we were talking about, which is the budget adjustment, which is the water line repair. There has been also some effort and we're close to getting the final invoice for the pedestrian bridge as well. So all of those kinds of things you'll see when we talk about the capital project list at the very end of the report here. So we are starting to see some capital activity that happened in the water department this quarter. WRF operations. And the WRF operations begin on page one oh six. Again, overall, WRF operations are looking really good. They have, you know, they have thirty eight, you know, or fifty one percent remaining in their expenditures. So they're faring very well for the fiscal year. You know, there's nothing really to highlight on there. And then WRF capital. So the WRF capital, which is on page one hundred and ten. It shows a significant deficit in the section seven ESA line item. And that in the, just this past board meeting that was addressed and that budget adjustment, you will be seeing to resolve that budget overage that's happening in the fourth quarter. Oh, there's Karen. She's coming back.
Hey.
Recording in progress.
Oh.
Oh, it was wrong.
Actually, I think it was probably because your, your phone was still.
Oh, the phone feedback. I'm so sorry. Dear God.
Oh, that's okay. Not to worry.
Now we lost our video though.
Yeah, we have our, we have the audio. So.
Okay. So then the wastewater department again, you know, you're going to see activity. Let's see, where is it? It's on page one hundred and fifteen for wastewater, the Cal Portland contract that we were talking about. We're going to start seeing that, you know, line item go very negative and it'll be offset by underspending in other areas. As far as capital projects go, let's see, which begins, there it goes. It's at the very end of page one sixteen and then carries on to the top of one seventeen. And the activity that you see in there in the capital for the quarter is related to the purchase of the pickup truck. There is a replacement truck that was purchased during this time period and you'll see that on the capital list as well. So again, wastewater is doing well. They're at forty three percent remaining. So they're, they're doing well as well for their expenditures to date. So then moving to the capital improvement project worksheets. The general fund begins on page one twenty one. And so you can see which specific project activity has occurred on thus far through the year. And that's in the column D, D as in David, that you'll see the current year activity. The following page is the wastewater fund. So again, column D, you see the replacement truck that was purchased. The budget was thirty thousand and it came in at twenty eight thousand. And then the only other capital thus far through the year was replacing of a pump. A subversible pump that was replaced. And then moving on to the last page, one twenty three, that is the, oops, wastewater, it's like wastewater got in there two times. Wastewater. Okay, so moving on to page one twenty four is the water fund. So you see water CIP at the top and WRF is at the bottom. So that again, column D reflects the activity that has happened thus far during this fiscal year through March thirty first. So I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any additional questions that anyone has regarding the, the quarter budget? And I'll move to the attendees to the public. Are there any questions that anyone from the public has? The only member of the public right now is Elizabeth Bettinhausen. And I'm not seeing any indication that that's, that there are any questions that she has at this time. So again, this is a circumstance of this isn't under consideration. So we're not voting on it, but it would boil down to again, that the agenda item was reviewed. I'm sorry, Ted.
It is for consideration. He's muted.
Oh. I didn't see, I didn't see anything in the subject title that had indicated that. Sorry.
There you go.
Sorry about that. Okay, so since this, I believe, is going to be the last time that we get a quarterly review from Pam. I would like to just express my thanks for the clarity and upgrade of information and you know, just the, the comprehensive improvement in the way our financials are, are tracked and presented. And so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're here. Excellent work.
So this item does require the finance committee to vote because it does have a staff recommendation to the board for the budget adjustment that is being requested.
Oh, all right. Okay. All right. So in terms of phrasing the, the vote for consideration, then it's a matter of stating the review of, of the budget with no additional questions to forward to the board that the review and acceptance on behalf of the committee and then to address the recommendation that the indicated budget funding from reserves to the water line repair be acted on by the board. Does that pretty much satisfy what you, what you need, Ms. Duffield?
Yes.
Right. Then I'm sure, yes, Mary?
Well, I was just gonna move to do what you guys just said.
Okay.
Second what she said.
Uh, you know, um, okay, so what we were going to do then obviously is take the vote and Ms. Maher?
Yes.
And Mr. Corn?
Hi.
And Mr. Seigler?
Hi.
And Ms. McDowell?
Hi.
And Ms. Crisman?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you all. So in action of item agenda three B, the motion is passed on a vote of five zero with a recommendation for the incorporation or for board action on the, the suggested budget addition being part of that. All right. That addresses the regular business items that we had for this meeting. The item left for our discussion then are future agenda items. Do, do I hear any future agenda items from any of the committee members? All right. Well, hearing none at this time, I'll move then to adjournment. Any? Nope, it all works for everybody. Okay.
By a claim.
By a claim. Fine. Thank you. Thank you all here for being here this morning. We we spent some, some time looking at two very important aspects of our financial structure. And your input and time spent here is appreciated. Thank you very much. And again, to you, Ms. Duffield, thank you for the efforts that you've been putting forward for the district. It has made us healthier. It has made us better and it's recognized and it's appreciated. So thank you. Right. I call for adjournment then.
Hi.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.